Good evening. Welcome to the September the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen Board Meeting of the Guthrie Public School Board of Education. It's seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Watts.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Salie.
Here.
Smidley.
Here.
Pennington.
Here.
Mr. President, we hold court.
We've established a court. Please stand and join me in the pledging of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number five, presentation of certified support employee of the month. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Ogilvy, we are returning to honor our supporting certified staff since the start of the school year.
Well, like I said, we're starting back this year. We are thankful that the Lions Club is able and donating a Sonnet gift card, twenty-five dollars for employee of the month for each certified and support, and so we really appreciate them doing that. The first support employee of the month will be presenting will be Ina Schultz.
Yay, yes.
When I know the nature of this is what I wrote. During Vicki's many years of service at Guthrie Public Schools, she has always taken great pride in her work, her knowledge of proper public school business practices, and her teaching skills. As a council table and incumbent clerk for the district, she has gone well above the base of responsibility to her job by being a resource to teachers, principals, directors, and other employees that need guidance or assistance in making a purchase, filing a claim, managing a grant, or any other computer-related task. Her dedication to Guthrie Public Schools is unquestioned. Twice she has taken on some or all of the duties of a retiring employee to save money for the district in tight economic conditions. These duties include becoming health insurance coordinator, managing our workers' compensation program, and serving as my assistant. Aside from her job performance, I have seen and appreciated her unselfishness demonstrated by her willingness to place the needs of family, coworkers, and the school district ahead of her own over the seventeen years we've worked together. From a personal perspective, I know my job would be much more difficult without her assistance.
Picture, picture.
A new school, what?
One, two, three. You don't run off because you want to talk for us. Yeah. In presenting the certified as cherry, Vicki from the high school.
I nominated Ms. Arnold, and this is what I remember. Ms. Arnold is our occupational therapist here at the high school, but she goes above the organ. She sent me hours working with the autism classroom to get things up and running with new stuff. She takes the time to put plans into place for autism classes, who have some students that require special plans. I love that she has a positive attitude and is willing to do whatever is asked or needed of her. I hope you will consider her employee of the month.
to our district, and we appreciate the Guthrie New Lions above as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Comments to the board by citizens registered to speak. Okay. Comments to the board by board members. I've got two things. I went out and saw the kids in our ag department competing this week at the Guthrie Fair, and we have a lot of kids out there showing a lot of animals, a lot of parents, a lot of volunteers, and I just think you guys ought to see that sometime. I was just amazed. They're showing goats from knee-high. I mean, some of them are little bitty kids, and the help that we got from the OSU Extension Center and the parents and the volunteers, it was amazing. I was very proud of that. Second thing, I want to thank the principals and the education, the PE education people for helping the Guthrie Kiawanas this week with the pump passing kick. We've put it on for about ten years, and they were, I passed them all out today to all the schools, and everybody was there and helped me a great deal, and I really appreciate that. Anybody else? Superintendent's report.
Okay. Several items, Mr. President. First of all, I want to mention that I think we've experienced where I would consider the smoothest start in my four years at Guthrie. I think that we entered the year with a renewed enthusiasm and a positive attitude about what we're trying to do and how we're trying to change kids' lives, and I appreciate the staff and the faculty for what they've done as we've started the school year. Guthrie High School raised eight thousand and seventy-two dollars over Pink Week last week for the family of Maria Husky to offset medical bills and funeral expenses. Maria was a community member whose two sisters are Guthrie Public School students. She recently lost her battle with cancer, and another note I received, a call of thanks today from her grandmother for all the efforts of our students and our staff. I visited with our new chamber CEO Gregory Coleman regarding forming partnerships between the chamber members and different school sites. This is in the formulation stage, and we hope to work on this and other partnerships throughout the year. The idea is to seek businesses to adopt schools and so that they can provide financial support, moral support, and possibly some mentorship opportunities and things like that, and that way they can tailor it toward what each school site needs because the needs are different in each site. Last Friday night, our Blue Jay football team defeated six-eight Ponca City by a score of twenty-eight to nineteen in front of a very large home crowd. Record's one and one. They'll head to Sand Springs to the final non-district game of the season. This Friday kickoff is at seven o'clock on the road. The Lady J softball team is having a great year. Their record's fifteen and nine, and they go to Carl Albert tomorrow at four-thirty as they prepare for the upcoming playoffs. Bank First is providing scholarships for students to visit the maybe Gare or Museum of Arts at St. Gregory's University in Shawnee. The scholarships include the cost of transportation. We're working with Bank First to get more details out to our staff so we can utilize this partnership to enhance the learning opportunities for our students. And finally, the student count is very similar to where we were at this time last year, within a few students of where we were last year, but a caveat to that, there are one hundred and eleven more students than what we ended the year with as well. That tells me that we lost students throughout the year. They're back with us, and so our job is to retain them, and so that's going to be our charge, and I'll talk more about that with our staff tomorrow at ad council. And that's my report.
Keeping with our progress here, number eight, presentation of the ACT High School College Success Report.
The curriculum committee last week had a chance to go over this. One thing I'd like to say is Mr. LaGrande, his staff has done a great job. You're going to see where the state average on ACT may be going down, we're going up, and so his staff has done a really good job of preparing students to take the ACT, and so you're going to see some good results right here. Our five-year trend of total test, a year ago, we stood up here and said we had the largest amount of students taken, one-hundred-and-fifty-three. We have a smaller senior class, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven kids took the ACT last year, and so you can see we're still way above the three two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen year, and so we're encouraging those kids to take the ACT, and we're working on ways to provide funding for that. Our English five-year trend, as you can look, if you just look at the state average, you can see the state average is going down from twenty-point-five in two thousand and eleven to twenty-point-one in two thousand and fifteen. We kind of went up a little bit, and then you can see we took a dip in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. Now, look, we're right up there at nineteen-point-eight, just three-tenths off the state average, and so as the state average is going down, we're going up, and so it's a good thing to happen there and proud of our teachers. We've had to turn over to the English department, too, over the years, and so the process that we're having, our curriculum maps and our tracking and stuff that they're doing at the high school and at the junior high, I think are going to play an important role in this. Mathematics, it's kind of been up and down a little bit with the state average, as you can see, but once again, it's going down over the last couple of years, three years, and we're going up and we're above the state average in math, and so, you know, one of the things that we're working on, Mr. LaGrande and his staff, they're putting to make sure that all our math teachers have common plan time with the Algebra I, and so they're able to plan together, and so we're starting to see some good results. The reading five-year trend, that's been pretty consistent over the state. As you can see, there's not a big difference there, but as you can see, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, we're climbing, and so we know we're two-tenths off of it again, but every year it looks like, you know, we're gaining on that state Science, if you guys remember right, biology EOI, we've been below state average. That state average is forty-eight percent, which is an F as a state, and we've been below that state average, but if you look at the kids that are taking the science test at the ACT, we're right there at state average, and we keep climbing, so one of the things that we're, you know, really pushing is trying to get kids, especially in the junior high, we have some things that are going on. Mr. Ramler presented some things. We were able to make a lab this year, and so each grade and each team are doing a lab once a week, and we're encouraging kids to get involved with science and take to the liking of wanting to be and doing a lab, and so I think these numbers are going to continue to climb, and I think we'll be over state average in this, which doesn't correlate a lot with the EOI, but I think this test is more liable. Our composite of all of them, you can see we're two-tenths off. It's been consistent as a state average, but as a district, we're climbing, and so, you know, just like we talked about with all the subjects. And that's all I have. Questions from me or Mr. LaGrande of ACT?
I want to mention something before the question. I was concerned that one of the side effects of increasing our participation in the ACT is that our average would actually go down because the students that have the greatest chance to be college-bound are going to take it for sure, and so as you reach further out, you get to students that are possibly more on the fringe of being a college-ready, and so we have increased our number and increased our average, and that doesn't, I don't take that lightly.
I was also going to say, as far as science is concerned, I'm very encouraged, being a former science teacher, it's kind of near and dear to my heart, but we're offering more science classes than we ever have this year. We added robotics. We've also, this is the first year we've offered AP Biology, and it's actually a two-hour class. The first part of the class, it's about its fourth and fifth period. Fourth period, they actually have the theory, and then fifth period, they actually do a lab, or they can actually start a lab, fourth period, complete it, fifth period, all in one setting. And then we're offering AP Environmental Science, we have physics. We had physics when I first got to high school last, and then we had dropped it because we didn't have an instructor. This is the second year in a row we've offered physics, and now it's the third year in a row we've offered a Chemistry II class, so we've actually got two sections of Chemistry II this year, so I'm very excited about what we've been at the high school and the science department, as well as all of the other subject areas, and you can see that on statewide level, this is the first year we've had above a training composite on the ACT, and it's a twenty-point-five, so I'm real excited about the work of our staff and our students at Guthrie High School.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Agenda number nine, consent agenda. All of the following items, those items of a routine nature, normally approved at board meetings, will be approved in one vote unless the board member desires to have a separate vote for any of the items. Consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, action, and the following items.
Consent agenda, with exception of nine B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Sin agenda item nine B is the August seventeenth Special Board Member Minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
I'm studying.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Six I's, one extension.
Item ten A, discussion, consideration, vote to grant the request of Robbins Commercial Roofing to withdraw its bid from the roof replacement at Central Elementary, Fogarty Elementary, Guthrie Upper Elementary, and to exonerate the bidder of its surety for liability under the bid bond.
Mr. President, items ten A, B, and C, I would assume, are very closely related. We opened the bids on the eighth, and I asked Sean Willis from Stacy Group to be present tonight as well in case there were some questions. The two lowest bidders made errors in their calculations that made material differences in what their bids should have been, and so the process, according to our attorneys, is to generally grant this request. The first one is for the Robbins Group. The second one is item ten B for another contractor, and we exonerate the bid bond. It's my recommendation that we do this, and if there are questions for myself or Sean, we're here happy to answer those. Their letter is on page eighty of your board packet.
I move that we approve the grant request from Robbins Commercial Roofing to withdraw its bid for the roof replacement at the schools listed in our bond issue.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Ten B, discussion, consideration, vote to grant High Tech Systems, Inc. to withdraw its bid for the roof replacement at Central Elementary, Fogarty, Guthrie, Upper Elementary, and exonerate the bid bidder and its surety from liability under the bid bond.
And this is another contractor, and they, the mistakes that the first contractor made that you just took action on were in measuring. This one was in the, or no, this one was in measuring, the first one was in the duration of the warranty, so it doesn't, you know, there's nothing that we did wrong in this, it's just that they missed it, and so my recommendation is that we accept item ten B as well.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Motion.
Motion.
I move we approve the grant request from High Tech Systems to withdraw its bid for the roof replacements as listed in our bond issue.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Ten C, discussion, consideration, vote to award a contractor with roof replacement at Central Elementary, Fogarty Elementary, Guthrie Upper Elementary School to Greco Roofing as the lowest possible bidder for the contract sum of seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
We received nine total bids, two of which we have just thrown out. It was a very competitive bid, and I was very pleased with the interest that we had, and I think we have a quality bidder based on the research that Mr. Willis has done, and if you have questions, Sean or I are your honor. Here, I'm recommending approval of this bid and acceptance.
Sean, have you seen these guys work before?
I have not personally worked with them, but in talking to them and looking at their qualifications, they seem qualified for the work.
And this bid that we have is going to save the district about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars below our estimate, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we were able to, sorry, question. I, we were able to have the roof scanned, all three roofs scanned during the process of designing the project, and I guess we were able to determine that the existing roof insulation was in good condition, so that roof, we were able to overlay the roof instead of doing a full tear-off and save a budget.
We make a big deal out of saving four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars up here.
One caveat I'd issue to that as well, though, is that unforeseen circumstances in a renovation can change the final cost, and one of the things that we've done in the bid process is that we've gotten unit costs on the potential unforeseen circumstances that are most common so that we don't have to come back with a change order, stop the job, we keep the job moving as well.
There's still the possibility of having to tear some of it off and that price going up.
Correct.
But it's starting off a lot better than what it looked.
Yes, like, you know, there will be probably a few spots of those two unit costs, one is for the roof insulation, one is for metal duct. If they do get into a spot, we know, we locked into a price that we know, you know, what to expect.
Glad we did.
Fantastic. Motion.
I make a motion that we award the contract for roof replacement at Central Elementary, Fogarty, and Guthrie Upper Elementary to Greco Roofing as the lowest possible bidder for the contract sum of seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Recommendation, consideration, and action upon gifted and talented committee for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen.
This is required annually, and we have to name a committee, and that list of the recommendations from Ms. Woodruff is on page eighty-three of your packet.
So what do they do, Ms. Woodruff?
We can, we, a department is needed in the next year, and they review our policies and procedures. We review our district plan to see if we need any revisions to that, and they'll also review our expenditures and our child.
I make a motion that we approve the gifted and talented committee for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Recommendation, considering action upon professional development committee for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen.
This is an annual requirement that we name a committee that oversees and recommends professional development, and Ms. Walters heads this up for our district, and she, this is on page eighty-four of your board packet. If you have questions, she can answer. Recommend approval.
I move we approve the professional development committee for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Recommendation, consideration, action upon the Stacy Group Architectural Services for two thousand and fifteen and sixteen.
This is the annual renewal of the contract that we have with Stacy Group. The only changes to the contract were the effective dates for the contract itself, and it is on page eighty-five of your board packet. Recommend approval.
I make a motion we approve the contract with the Stacy Group for architectural services.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Recommendation, consideration, action upon Guthrie Junior High Health Fair for seventh grade students, October the twentieth, twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
This is on page ninety-five of your board packet. We have done this annually for many years, and Mr. Ogilvy can answer any questions you have. He experienced it as a billing principal, and now brings us to the board to deny for approval. Recommend approval.
Motion.
I make a motion we approve the Guthrie Junior High Health Fair for seventh grade students, October twentieth and twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Recommendation, consideration, and action upon memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and Guthrie Public Schools.
I was skipping that one.
Okay. My fault. Recommendation, consideration, and action upon, that one's bothering me so much, what are we talking about? Reconvening the English Club at the Guthrie High School to include a paid sponsor.
This item we bring to you, it should have been included in the student handbook and was not. They have still want to keep this club active, and when the handbooks were drafted and we were going through some of the changes with formulation of clubs, that was omitted, and we want to add this back in.
Recommendations?
Recommend approval.
Motion.
I make a motion that we approve the reconvening of the English Club at the Guthrie High School to include a paid sponsor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Item I, recommendation, consideration, action upon memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and Guthrie Public Schools for supplemental funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for the eighth grade students.
This is the fifth year, I believe, that we've been a part of the Gateway Program at the junior high, and Meridian, through a grant, provides us twenty-five thousand dollars for operation of it, as well as many other in-kind items to support this STEM curriculum that is present in these classes.
This Meridian Technology, this is the same one we discussed last year about talking to them, about bringing classes to our high school at night or doing things in our community here?
Yes, we've had those discussions. That's not related to this, but we've had those discussions.
They need to support us. I saw how much we pay taxes to them out of our county.
And we've also had more discussions about what you mentioned.
Good. Recommendations?
Recommend approval.
Motion.
Make a motion we approve the memorandum of understanding between Meridian Technology Center and Guthrie Public Schools for supplemental funding for Guthrie Middle School Gateway to Technology Programs for eighth grade students for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Smidley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero A.
Item J, recommendation, consideration, action upon two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen STEM Academy Pre-Engineering and Biomedical Sciences Joint Program Agreement with Meridian Technology Center.
This is a new item, and Mr. Ogilvy, would you care to explain this to the board?
Please. Meridian is offering some classes that some of our students may not be able to attend Meridian because they need that specific class to graduate, and so they are starting a new pre-engineering and biomedical program, and so some of the classes that our students need to meet our recommendations and requirements to graduate Guthrie, they're going to provide those services so those students can still take the class there, and we'll have probably a handful of kids that will take advantage of that in the near future.
Recommendations?
So they'll be best to Meridian?
Yes. They'll still be best.
My daughter's actually participating in this program, and she is so excited, just the learning environment, the material. So if you do have some science-interested students, she's loving it.
Recommend approval.
Motion?
I make a motion we approve the 2015, 2016 STEM Academy Pre-Engineering and Biomedical Sciences Joint Program Agreement with Meridian Technology Center.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Recommendation, consideration, and action to approve the transcript of the math and science credit options taught at Meridian Technology Center.
An annual action by the board so that our students that take math and science courses there can be, the credit can be transcripted on Guthrie High School transcript for graduation. Recommend approval.
Motion?
I move to approve the transcription of math and science credit options taught at Meridian Technology Center.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Recommendation, consideration, and action upon 2015, 2016 estimate of needs as prepared by Putnam &amp; Company, PLLC, and 2014-15 financial statement and the authority to publish the same.
Mr. Schultz?
The moment you've been waiting for.
Page 102 is a summary, basically that the auditor has prepared of that 50-page document so that we won't be here looking at numbers all night. Basically, there are three things that the auditor looks at whenever they're preparing this for us, and what it is, is the legal authorization to have an appropriation or spending limit. So they look at the fund balance that we carried from last year into this year. They look at estimates of miscellaneous revenue based upon what we collected last year, and then they prepare the tax levy based on our valuations and our millages for the general fund and building fund. So those three components make up what is our total appropriation or legal spending limit for the upcoming year. You can see the current year estimate of needs on page 102. In the second column is the prior year, and the difference in the twos in the, in the final column of that summary sheet. In the general fund, although we legally could spend up to this limit of a $200,000 increase, we will be very careful about spending to that level because we really expect to have some decreases in revenue based upon the estimates they did from last year. So we'll monitor this as the year goes on and make sure that the actual collections in those miscellaneous revenue areas meet what was estimated. If they don't, then we'll plan accordingly. This is not our operating budget. It's just a legal authorization to spend up to this amount, and we will have a much more detailed approach to actually having an operating budget for the district.
Motion?
I make a motion we approve the 2015, 2016 estimate of needs as prepared by Putnam &amp; Company, PLLC, in 2014, 2015 financial statement and the authority to publish the same.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Watts.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Salie.
Yes.
Medley.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Seven I zero Ns.
Item number 11, proposed executive session purposes discussing employment of personnel FMLA requests, resignation, separation, or employment, and transferred positions request